Your Honor, we are live. We are live, Your Honor.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call the council meeting to order. And we really have a special evening planned for you. We're here at the beginning of the meeting to recognize some really outstanding Newark High School students who academically have just simply excelled. There's no other way to say it. When you see and hear about some of their accomplishments and some of the things that they've been able to achieve in their four years at Newark High School, you'll recognize that we really do have some talented students here in our district. And we, the City Council, are really proud of them. And we're proud of all the students that work hard. Even if you're a 2.0 student, but you work your hardest to achieve that, you know, we give you credit for that. Because that's all we ask is people, you know, put in the effort. Put in the effort, and good things will always happen. And sometimes when you're down, you know, but you keep fighting back, good things will happen. So it's really my honor to... And these students are being recognized because my colleague on the Newark City Council, Councilmember Cantancio, attended the senior awards ceremony and said, you know, Mayor, we need to recognize some of these outstanding students that we have in our city. And I said, you know, that's absolutely fine, and I agree that we should do that. And I've extended that invitation to all my council colleagues, that if you have citizens or community members that you think we should recognize, let me know who they are, and I'm happy to see that we make that happen. So whether they're in the business community, the academic community, the social community, whatever the case may be, we need to recognize those people that day in and day out just do outstanding work in our community. And so tonight, we're going to be recognizing some outstanding students. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Cantancio. I'm going to ask her to introduce her daughter, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But before we ask her to come up, she has really accomplished significant things when it comes to academic achievement, community participation, and things of that nature. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Cantancio.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me make sure that this mic works. There we are. Thank you. And thank you also to the class of 2025. You're so amazing, and I love seeing your smiling faces here with your family and your friends to be with you today. And one of the main reasons why I've also asked the council and the mayor to recognize you is not only for your achievements, but the fact that you just keep fighting back and you are representing Newark wherever you are. And so thank you so much for everything that you're doing and your hard work. As Julyla Cantancio can come up, I would also like to mention she is my daughter. She's also the president and founder of Draw Dropping Art Club. If you want to stay right there at the podium, we're about to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And she's also the president of California Scholarship Federation. She received the top 10 honors for the school. And yesterday, she also received MVP, Player of the Year, for golf. And she also has done the murals at the school as well as for Washington Hospital. So if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record show, Madam Clerk, that all members of the City Council are here this evening. And the first item on our agenda is to commend Tiffany Allen Vargas for her induction into the Alameda County Women's Hall of Fame. Please join me. Boy, this is going to be a night of celebration. I just feel it. Let me take a moment to recognize Ms. Vargas. Whereas Tiffany Allen Vargas is the visionary founder and director of the Tri-City Athletic Center, a nonprofit organization in Newark dedicated to motivating and empowering young athletes and extensive athletic training and leadership development programs. Whereas Tiffany Allen Vargas has over 15 years of experience in coaching youth athletes throughout the Tri-City area and has made impactful contributions to local sports organizations, including her current role as the head of Sports Performance at 1974 Newark Football Club. Whereas Tiffany Vargas is actively involved in organizing community events in collaboration with local charities like Love Newark and Tri-City Volunteers. These initiatives encourage student athletes to engage with diverse communities, fostering important life and social skills both on and off the field. Whereas as a former student athlete herself, Tiffany Allen Vargas recognizes the vital connection between education and athletics. She's committed to guiding each athlete she mentors to leverage their skills and knowledge towards pursuing higher education, ultimately inspiring them to give back to their community. Remember that. Now therefore, I, Michael Hannan, on behalf of the Newark City Council, want to recognize Tiffany Allen Vargas for her induction into the Alameda County Women's Hall of Fame. Her unwavering dedication, leadership, and passion has made a profound and lasting impact on the lives of young people across the Tri-City area. So please, join me in congratulating Ms. Vargas on this prestigious award.
Thank you very much. What we do over at the gym at Tri-City, it's so much more than just training athletes. I really believe when we have our, you know, our students walk through the door, they're a person before they're a player in life before the game. So we really try to instill skills that they can take on the field, off the field. And really, 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 I talk about use your God-given abilities to go out in the world, if that means going to college, making those connections, and then come back and serve our community. So it's really important that, you know, our student athletes, they understand that and they come back and give back, just as we're giving into them. And I think this is a beautiful night that I'm here with so many students as you guys are embarking, you know, in the first step into your big future. So congratulations to you guys, and thank you, everyone. And we are always trying to give to the students, so it does take a lot of support from the community. We have an upcoming fundraiser with Ms. Eve. We are planning. It'll be on... More information to come, but we're going to be doing a poker kind of tournament. It will be called Aces for Athletes. It's coming up this August, August 24th. More details will come, but we are going to need the community's support. So please look out for that. Come support if you play cards. If not, we can sit and chat, you know, just donate, and then you can have a great conversation with me.
The... For those of you that are betting and counting tonight, the over-under on the Vice Mayor coughing during presentations because we forgot to do something is currently three. So we're taking bets. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for that. More somber... More somber recognition. I'd like to invite Angela Crawford of Jammer Strong Foundation to join me. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to be issuing proclamation with my colleagues on the Council, number 1944, proclaiming Brain Tumor Awareness Month. Okay? Whereas brain tumors, which affect individuals of all ages, genders, and backgrounds, are a critical public health issue, with nearly 700,000 people in the United States currently living with a primary brain tumor and over 94,000 to be diagnosed in 2025 alone. Whereas brain tumors can be malignant or nonmalignant, yet all have the potential to significantly impact the quality of life due to their location and the complexity of treatment. Whereas increased public awareness, ongoing research, and expanded access to advanced care are essential to improving early diagnosis, treatment outcomes, and the overall well-being of those affected. Whereas organizations, medical professionals, caregivers, and advocates work tirelessly throughout the year to support brain tumor patients and families, raise critical funding for research, and promote education. Whereas the Brain Tumor Awareness Month serves as a vital opportunity to honor the courage of patients, remember those that we have lost, and renew our commitment to finding a care through advocacy, innovation, and community support. And I would add to that to recognize and thank the family members that treat those that are suffering through traumatic brain injuries. Because those life-giving folks really make life easier for those that are suffering. So therefore, I, Michael Hannan, the mayor, on behalf of my City Council, declare Brain Tumor Awareness Month in May in the City of Newark, and encourage all residents to wear gray. I did get the memo. To wear gray, the awareness color for brain tumors, participate in awareness activities, and support efforts to improve the lives of those impacted by this devastating disease. And it's my pleasure to present this to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to, well, more of an honor to accept this on behalf of the cancer community. I am from the Jammer Strong Foundation, which is a local nonprofit here in Newark. And we are dedicated to pediatric cancer awareness, education, research, et cetera. But our focus for research is pediatric brain tumor research. And so May is a very important month to us. The Jammer Strong Foundation is named after my nephew, who has a very rare form of brain cancer called DLGNT, to which it's very rare and there is no cure. But that has guided us to learn more about everything that our community needs, and we are moving forward with whatever we can do to help. So we are pleased to say that we have a very strong relationship with Stanford. And we... Any money we raise towards research goes to... Through the Lucille Packard Foundation with Stanford. So any money raised in May, so please follow all of our socia ls, where you'll see all the fundraising we're doing in the month of May. But any money from May goes directly to Dr. Michelle Monji, who's a world-renowned pediatric brain tumor researcher through Stanford. And she's incredible, and we have a wonderful relationship with them. So that's where all our money for May will be going. So we look forward to getting the community's help with that, and we look forward to all the amazing things to come. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
May I speak?
Yes.
So I just want to tell you thank you so much for coming out and acknowledging Brain Cancer Day. I don't think people understand how common brain cancer is. Does anyone know somebody who knows brain cancer, has brain cancer? I have brain cancer. I've had brain cancer for 25 years. I first got diagnosed when I was 18 years old. I always wear makeup to cover up all my wounds, but I have all tons of wounds that I've had. I have cuts, I have scrapes, and I've gone through many surgical procedures, and I've done everything. It is closer than you know. Brain tumors are there, they're horrible, and there's not enough research being done for them. It's not like it's pinky cancer, elbow cancer. It's your brain. You know, so I want you guys to be very aware. It's serious, and it's scary, and I'm one of the very few 25-year survivors, and it's very rare. I've lost a lot of friends. There's not enough research out there. All I'm saying to you is please be aware, more people have tumors than you know. It's very, very scary. The second thing I just want to make very clear to all of you guys is there's a lot of things and side effects to brain tumors that people don't know. I see you nodding your head because you understand. A lot of them are visible disabilities, such as you may lose a leg or you can't walk. But then people have invisible disabilities like myself. I have short-term memory loss. And as David knows, I'm... If you hang out with me, it's like emo. I forget everything in 15 seconds. You always see me writing things down, so that's one of the things. But I just want you guys to be aware of. Thank you so much for honoring it. Thank you, it means more to me than you know. And please be aware, be kind to others, because you don't know what people's struggles have. And cancers and brain tumors are more often said. I get asked all the time, all the time, Eve, why are you always smiling? Why are you always happy? Why are you bouncy? 25-year brain cancer patients are unheard of. We don't make it this long. So I just want to share with you guys, I've had the blessing twice, so it'd be still alive. And I've been told by two separate doctors, you're going to die in a week or less, you better get your stuff together. So be thankful for life, enjoy it, and celebrate every day. Thank you.
Now, it's really my great pleasure to start recognizing these outstanding students. And the first student that we're going to recognize has actually sat on the Newark Unified School District Board for the last two years. And I listened to all the school board meetings, because it's my responsibility, and I think my colleagues listen to the school board meetings as well, because it's our responsibility as community leaders to know what's going on throughout the entire community. So we know what's going on in our schools. We know the challenges that they face. We know the hard work that they're putting forth to make sure that our schools give the students the quality of education that we, parents and community members, demand. And these are just some of the examples, some of the outstanding students, and some of the fine work that's going on at the high school that we don't often hear about. But tonight, we, the council, wanted to recognize them. So I'm going to invite Joy Lee up to the podium. Let me tell you a little bit about Ms. Lee. Joy Lee is a senior at Newark Memorial High School. Whereas Joy Lee is the co-president of Interact Club, the high school division of Rotary. Oh, by the way, it's not here. But last year, during the crab feed, last year during the crab feed, Joy was the crab. So she ran up and down the aisles to get everybody motivated about the crab that was coming out. You remember that. Whereas Joy Lee organized a shoe drive the past two years, collecting over 120 pairs of shoes to benefit Souls for Souls, a nonprofit organization that repurposes shoes to create economic, health, educational, service, and environmental opportunities for people in need. Whereas Joy Lee is the current student body member of the Newark Unified School Board District's Board of Education, and will be completing her service at the end of this school year. The board is a legislative body of the school district and establishes policies by which the school district operates. Ms. Lee is the student voice at board meetings, highlighting issues, events, and sharing the students' perspective on all school board matters. Whereas Joy Lee will be attending the University of California, Berkeley this upcoming fall. Now therefore, I, Michael Hannan, on behalf of my City Council, being very proud of Ms. Lee for her service to the Newark Unified School District Board of Education, her contributions to the Newark community, and for making us all proud of her accomplishments, I present on behalf of my colleagues this commendation to you.
First of all, thank you so much for recognizing me. It's really so, so special to be standing here in front of all of you guys and receiving this recognition. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for my community, though. Really, being in Newark since fourth grade, every single one of you guys have built me up and supported me, and I just want to say thank you, even directly or indirectly. Sitting on the school board for the past two years has been nothing but challenging yet exciting, and it's been such an honor to serve my students at my school. The work, however, isn't finished. Our New York schools still need help, we still need support, and it's really up to us, our community, to come back and to come and support our school sites. I'm really excited for the bond we have coming up to update our facilities. And although I won't be here to see it happen, I know that... I already know, and I'm planning to come back and help support our Newark Unified School District again. Thank you so much, everybody, for this amazing, amazing honor, and thank you to God, who just was there by my side through it all. And I wouldn't have been able to be here if there wasn't for God.
Ms. Lee mentioned it. Thank you to the Newark voters. Your passage of Measure O is bringing in $200 million to the school district, money that's extremely needed at this time. And it's the voters that made that happen. And so big thanks to you for recognizing the need and supporting such a worthy cause. I'd like to now invite Isaac Pineda to join me, please. These accomplishments just get better and better. You know, you think you finally reached a plateau where they can't do any better than that, but we continue to see that. So it's my pleasure and my council's pleasure to issue a commendation to Isaac. Whereas Isaac is a senior at Newark Memorial High School and valedictorian, by the way. Isaac pulled me aside as we were walking in. He says, Mayor, my speech will not be nearly as long as yours when I give mine. He'll be graduating class. He earned the highest GPA, an exceptional 4.857. While, oh, by the way, while completing 15 Advanced Placement courses. Whereas Isaac was co-president of the Rocketry Club, who, oh, by the way, has been recognized by this council, and represented Newark Memorial on national stages, including Washington, D.C., and Alabama, where he played a key role in designing a six-foot high-power rocket body and raising $10,000... $50,000 in funding. His efforts culminated in a successful launch through the NASA Student Launch Initiative, complete with a functioning payload, collecting real-time atmospheric data. Whereas Isaac also served as the head of the Learn to Code Club, where he organized a month-long event to teach coding fundamentals through game customization, co-lead of the Girls Who Code Club, where he championed inclusive... inclusivity in STEM and created meaningful learning opportunities for young women in tech, worked in the robotics club, and tutored an AP-level science and mathematics, mentoring over 15 students in physics, chemistry, and calculus. So not only is he getting an education, he's educating others. Isaac has also given back to the community, volunteering over 200 hours in events like Rotary Crab Feed. Oh, we didn't get you to be the crab, did we? The Day of the Dead, Newark Days, Puente, Adopt a Family, and local school programs. He was selected to represent Newark Memorial in the prestigious California Boys and Girls State Competition. Now therefore, I, Michael Hannan, on behalf of my colleagues, commend Isaac Pineda for his outstanding academic performance, exemplary leadership, unwavering commitment to community service, and wish him well in his future endeavors. So it's our pleasure to award you this commendation.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for giving me this award. It is such an honor to be able to receive this and be recognized by the City Council. But I cannot continue without thanking God as well, for all my accomplishments are through God, and all my failures are through myself. And I can't also continue without thanking my family, for they've been with me all this time, supporting me... Supporting me all the way through and overprotecting me, even if I didn't want it. And of course, the rest of my accomplishment is credited to my friends and my community, for I really am a product of my environment. My friends and my community built me to who I am, and they are now part of my identity. Newark will forever be part of my identity, and I cannot thank them enough for being here with me today. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, can we ask Isaac where he's going to go to school?
Sure. Isaac, where are you going to be attending college?
Oh, yes, MIT.
MIT. Notice I didn't make a joke about Berkeley. Oh, Lord. You know, Isaac mentioned it, and others have mentioned it as well, and I mentioned it. Really, big thanks, not only goes to teachers, but to parents. Parents are the motivators that work with our children every day, from kindergarten through high school, because that's really the only time that we have them. They go off to MIT, they go off to Notre Dame, they go off to Berkeley, they're now on their own. We've done our best as parents to give them all the tools to be successful, and they've already demonstrated that they are successful. So our hope as parents is we've done our part, now it's up to you. Make us proud, as you have, and these folks are going to continue to do that. So big thanks to all the parents. Zainah. We're also issuing a commendation to Zaina, where Zaina Ansari is a senior at Newark Memorial High School and valedictorian. So let's hear it for that. Of her graduating class, where she earned an exceptional GPA of 4.602. Whereas Zaina has distinguished herself as a dynamic leader across several student organizations, as co-president and captain of the Rocketry Club. They helped guide competitive teams through complex national contests, including NASA Student Launch and the American Rocketry Challenge. In addition, she served as president of the Hack Club?
It's a same as Learn to Code.
Is it? Is it?
It's got the warnings.
Watch out, you know? If we get a, if we get like a ransom note from Zaina, we'll know what's going on. Blending technical skill with cultural awareness and digital creativity. Whereas Zaina is a talented communicator, winning the Rotary Club's 2025 Speech Contest. See, I say that selfishly because I'm the president of Rotary here in Newark. So it's our pleasure to have her win that prestigious award. And earning recognition from the Optimist Club in both 2023 and 2025, she has delivered numerous presentations in support of STEM outreach and fundraising efforts, and notably for the Newark Rocketry Project. Whereas Zaina is the founder of Girls Who Code program that has empowered elementary school girls in Newark through weekly sessions over the past two years. Her leadership in organizing STEM events and serving as a science camp counselor reflects her dedication to nurturing the next generation of scientists, engineers, and innovators. Man, you are so smart. Now, therefore, I, Michael Hannon, on behalf of my council colleagues, want to commend Zaina Ansari for her outstanding academic performance, dedication, and community service, and wish her well in her future endeavors. Congratulations.
So I, just like Joy, have been here since fourth grade, and I would just love to say, oh, first off, thank you. Thank you for the award. I love how Newark, throughout these years, I guess eight or nine years, has just been so supportive of everything the students want to accomplish. Like, for example, the Optimism Club, they are giving back to the community by giving scholarships. Rotary is giving back to the community through scholarships. Students come back and work, as I did, as a science camp counselor. You know, they want to give back to their students, the students that, just like how they were given back to. And all the clubs, Rocketry Club, which Isaac and I are both co-presidents of, we received so much money from Rotary Club. I love how everything in Newark is all about giving back to one another, and it's, you're part of this massive community. And, you know, for example, again, my optometrists, they gave back through a scholarship to Newark students. Every time you see a Newark community group, you see them giving back to one another, and I love that about Newark. And I think none of this would be possible, none of these awards, none of these accomplishments would be possible without, first of all, my family, so thank you. My dad's over there. I love them. Also, the teachers that support us. My sixth-grade teacher is someone I still remember because of how much she gave to her students and how supportive she was of us. My teachers, obviously, they're not here, but teachers like Ms. Gar and Mr. Goldsmith always are teaching us, and they're always giving back to us, and they're always supporting us with everything we need, staying long hours after school to help us with our clubs. And none of this would be possible if they didn't spend their time staying for us. And then, of course, you know, the Newark community, as I mentioned before, people are giving back through money, they're giving back through awards, they're giving back through support, and I just really would love to thank that specifically, the Newark community, my parents, and the teachers.
No, take it with you. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I was also told to say with school. I'm going to, I'll be attending UCLA in the fall for cognitive science, where I hope to pursue user experience design and design products that are meaningful and intuitive to people. Thank you.
So we have a Golden Bear. We have a Bruin. I don't know what MIT's mascot is. What is it? A beaver? A beaver, okay. But you know what? We save the best for last. Sorry to say, folks. We save the best for last. This next gentleman, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to invite him up here to join me, Mr. Rizel Ross Sessay. Please join me, my friend. I'm not going to say where he's going to go because I want to let him have the pleasure of doing that, but I just, I'm breathless. Whereas Rizel is a senior at Newark Memorial High School, and whereas Rizel is the president of the Black Student Union Medical Club and the founder and president of the After School Teacher AIDS Program, Rizel has shown a rare capacity to not only identify areas of need, but also to act decisively and effectively to meet them. His vision and commitment have empowered peers, fostered inclusion, and supported educational growth beyond the classroom. See, that's what makes someone like Rizel and these other students so special. They see a need and say, you know what? I'm not going to sit back and wait for someone else to deal with it. I see a need, I'm going to take responsibility to make sure that I do my part to see if I can't fit that need and come up with a solution. Whereas Rizel's leadership extends across a variety array of initiatives. As Secretary of the Environmental Club, Lead for Science Cap at Birch Grove Intermediate, and Head of the Newark Memorial High School Staff Appreciation Committee, he has modeled leadership, collaborative spirit. His role in Link Crew has been equally impactful, guiding younger students with empathy and care during their critical transitions. Where outside of school, see, they don't do enough in school, they got to do more outside of school. Rizel serves as a Kaiser Permanente Teen Counsel, lending his voice to meaningful youth advocacy in healthcare spaces. His dedication to both academic and social causes was nationally recognized when he was awarded the Quest Bridge National College Match Scholarship, a testament to his exceptional intellect, resilience, and drive. Now, therefore, I, Michael Hannon, the mayor of the City of Newark, on behalf of my council colleagues, want to recognize Russell Ross Sessay for his many achievements and wish him well in his future endeavors. Congratulations, my friend. And I don't normally, I don't normally quiz these folks, but I want, Rizel, if you would take a moment just to mention the competitive nature of Quest Bridge and why that means so much, especially for the city of Newark, please, and also the school you're going to go to.
So the importance of Quest Bridge is that it provides low-income and first-generation students with a scholarship to top universities throughout the country. So this includes like Harvard, Stanford, and whatnot. And the reason why Quest Bridge is such an important aspect, especially for students at Newark Memorial, is that it really truly sets them up for life, truly. For people who come from disenfranchised backgrounds and whatnot, it will truly help them, set them up for life, and really pave a way for them to truly make a difference in the world. And I'm forever grateful to my mom here today and the first lady at my church here for helping me for guiding me, helping me, and just being with me throughout all of, not just high school, but throughout all of my life as well. And I'm truly thankful to God as well for all of his blessings that he's given me, for if it wasn't for him, I would have not gotten this recognition. I, of course, also want to thank the City Council for this as well, Ms. Katanga for this. It's truly an honor, and the school I have decided or will be going to is Notre Dame University in Indiana. There, I'll be majoring in political science and economics on the pre-law track to hopefully go into law school and to truly make a difference into this world and possibly even come back here, serve on the City Council as well, so. This guy's truly the limit, and I'm forever thankful for that. So, thank you.
See, now I'm a little disappointed in Rizel. He's lowered his standard. I can serve on the Newark City Council. I see this young man being a congressional representative someday. Before I forget, it was made mention, it was made mention of the Newark Optimist Club and their contributions to our community. We have the president of the Newark Optimist Club here this evening. Councilmember Matthew Jorgens is the president of the Newark Optimist Club. Last year. And the next president of the Newark Optimist Club is Mr. Terrence Grindal. So community support doesn't just stop here, it continues elsewhere. I'm going to want to get the council to get a photograph with all you folks, but before I do that, I'm going to invite the superintendent of Newark Unified School Districts to say a few words.
I am so honored to be here with our students this evening. Aren't they amazing? Mayor Hannon, esteemed council members, esteemed colleagues, community, I am just thrilled to be able to share with you that we are going to be graduating 350 students this coming year, maybe a few more, still waiting on some results, and so, but I will tell you, what you are seeing here this evening is just an example of students that are out there ready to take on the world and lead and represent Newark in such an amazing way. I can't wait to see your accomplishments, hear who you are going to become. If they come back to council, I have no doubt that maybe one day you could be President of the United States. Because I will tell you, their start here and their foundation is so community-based. You heard the amazing work that they do, not only in school, but right here in the community, and they are just a primary example of who we are bringing into our world, who is going to be celebrated for many, many years to come with their accomplishments, and is really truly, as your superintendent, I am just so thrilled with who you have become as young adults in this world to be able to represent everything out there that's good in life, because you are it. And for that, I'm so grateful to your family and our community members and all of you. So, thank you.
Colleagues, why don't you come down and join me? Let's take a photograph with these outstanding students. Superintendent Picard asks you to join me. City Manager Benun, if you would join us as well. Why don't you folks stand here in the middle with your commendations held up? Congratulations. Congratulations, folks.
Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a five-minute break. Five-minute break. Convenient in five minutes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and call the city council meeting back to order. The next item of business is to introduce our new employees, and I would ask Viva De Schumuk to join me at the podium, please.
I love introducing new employees, because I remember my first day in public service, and I'm not sure if this is your first time in public service or not, but it's really memorable, recognizing that I'm now going to be dedicating myself to helping others within my community, no matter what I do. Vipah was recently promoted to senior civil engineer. Congratulations. Maybe we can get the MIT guy to come work for us. Over the past couple of years, Vipa has played a key role in managing complex land development projects, ensuring coordination across departments and agencies. She has consistently demonstrated strong technical expertise, excellent project management skills, and a proactive approach to problem-solving, which is really what government's all about, problem-solving. During a time of staffing transitions, Vipa stepped up to lead the land development team and kept major projects on track. She has also mentored junior engineers and helped streamline review processes to better share our applicants and community, better serve our applicants and community. We're excited to have her take on this new leadership role and continue contributing to the city's growth and success. Outside of work, Vipa brings the same level of focus and passion, though usually directed towards weekend trips to the beaches and local food stops. We're lucky to have her on our team, and we can't wait to see all the great things that she does for the city moving forward. Welcome.
That's a talented employee that's been here one and a half years and already being promoted. That shows talent. Congratulations. Now, I want to welcome Danica Nelson to join me. Danica. I got all the Parks people sitting in the back rows again, a lot of those Parks people, you know? Danica was born and raised in Newark. And is sincerely grateful for this opportunity to work for the city she has spent her whole life in. After graduating from Newark Memorial in 2019, Danica attended UC Davis. In 2022, she earned her Bachelor of Science degree in human development and minored in sociology. At Davis, Danica worked as a preschool, at a preschool where she learned about child development while getting direct experience with children. After this experience, she knew working with kids was for her. She loved learning the theories and science behind early childhood and learned different ways to equip children with tools and strategies they need to be successful. Danica received her registered behavioral technician certificate in 2023 and worked one-on-one with children on the autism spectrum. She learned all about child behavior and various techniques for improving skills and reducing challenging behaviors. Danica moved on to be a lead teacher and assistant director at inclusion preschools and strengthened her leadership and curriculum-building skills. She loves seeing children grow and learn new things and strives to help them do this every day. In her free time, didn't think you had any free time. In her free time, Danica enjoys reading and writing, going on walks and picnics, and spending time with her family. She also played volleyball on an adult league team at the Silliman Activity Center and enjoyed time spent with friends and family. Let's welcome Danica. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're now at the point of our meeting where it's public comment time. This is an opportunity for the folks in the audience to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the city council? Please come forward and identify yourself, please. Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Hi.
Hello, my name is Ms. Patel, and I am a science teacher at August Schilling Elementary in Newark. Before I taught at Schilling Elementary, I was a science teacher in Berkeley, California, where I earned Time Magazine Teacher of the Year for innovative teaching practices. Specifically, I planted the first-ever schoolyard Miyawaki forest in Berkeley. These forests not only cool the planet, but they provide birds and butterflies with much-needed habitat. The method comes from Japan, where Dr. Akira Miyawaki discovered a method to make local indigenous trees grow 10 times faster than when the soil is well-prepared. In Berkeley, our trees are now over 15 feet tall in just three short years. We replaced a barren, water-guzzling lawn with a dense native planting, and butterflies and bees and birds moved in overnight. The students of Schilling Elementary will plant the first Miyawaki forest in Newark at Schilling Elementary School next fall. I also teach students about relevant topics that are important to them. This year, my students and I were exploring human digestive systems as a part of life science. When we studied the highly-processed ingredients in our food systems, my students wanted to take action, and here we are.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mila Elizabeth Yoppen. I am the student body president of Schilling Elementary. I'm here to address an issue that was first brought up by my science teacher, Ms. Patel. She mentioned that we should realize what, we should be more aware of what we eat in our daily basis, not just at home, but what we eat at school. At Schilling Elementary, we have meals such as burritos, pizzas, and pastas. I'm not complaining about these offerings, but these types of food are mostly pre-made foods that might have preservatives and harmful dyes, such as Red 40. Red 40 is a petroleum-based dye that is used in many foods, such as Skittles, Trix, Gatorade, Otter Pops, and almost-processed foods, all processed foods. This can affect our brain functions, skin, and can develop allergies. The U.S. is facing a crisis of obesity. One in five children are obese, and one of the main causes is unhealthy eating habits. I feel that having, I made a petition to stop using these frozen foods at school. I realize that these preservatives are bad for our health, but getting rid of them, our pizzas or burritos might not be possible, because some of us love them. I'd like to propose if the district could provide healthier snack options, like trail mixes, celery with peanut butter, salads, or baked potatoes. Also, we would like our meals to be freshly made at our school every day. School children in Japan and India get hot, freshly-cooked meals. Why don't we? I feel that having fresh food options help us in thinking about our overall health and to help us be aware of what we can put in our bodies. This will enable us to make a better decision that will affect our lives as we grow. Here is a petition we've made. We have gotten 116 signatures from students, parents, and staff members from our school that want to have the better, healthy options without those preservatives. Furthermore, we'd like to talk about our Miyawaki forest that we will be planting in our school. We are planting a drought-tolerant Miyawaki forest for the importance of improving air quality and supporting biodiversity. We are replacing a water-guzzling lawn with a native forest. The variety of life on Earth is essential for healthy ecosystems and well-being while having fun. Since 2024 was the hottest year in human history, and trees cooled the planet, we would also see Miyawaki forests planted in Newark, all over Newark. Thank you for listening and inviting me. Lastly, before I leave, would Mayor Hannon and his council members would like to sign our petition and help?
Yes, we'd love to sign the petition. Colleagues, should we go down and sign the petition?
Let's open up the page for them to sign. You have to write your name and your grade.
Happy to do so.
This is an honor.
What grade are you in? And we'd like to invite the superintendent as well to come up. And that's Kristoff, another Schilling student. Perhaps we can get a photo?
Absolutely.
You know, my friend told me, you either pay for it now or you pay for it later. So, that's a good thing. Thank you for organizing this.
That'd be amazing.
Breakfast pizza.
Thank you for coming up and talking about it, both of you guys. Thank you for being present.
Thank you so much.
Maybe you can stand in front of them, because they're shorter. Okay, thank you so much for signing the petition.
Let's get a picture? Here, why don't you hold the petition? Right here. Turn around. Ms. Patel?
And hold it up like this, like there, like that. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Good luck. The nice thing to know is, Ms. Patel, what grade is the student? Fifth grade. So, think about that. In about eight years, seven, eight years, she'll be sitting over here. Being introduced as the valedictorian at Newark Memorial High School and telling all of us to great applause that she's going to go to Notre Dame University. I just see that in my dreams.
I love that.
For those of you that haven't walked down Fortin Avenue recently, you'll see that the frontage road along Schilling has been dug up, and that's where the Miyawaki is going to be planted, and we're excited about that. And I know my colleagues and I are certainly looking forward to the day that we do the official groundbreaking or whatever we need to do.
It'll be in December of this year, and we'd love to see more Miyawaki forests. I'm sorry that the Parks people left, but we'd love to see more Miyawaki forests all over Newark, and they can be a great part of our climate action plan to lower the urban heat island effect and increase biodiversity and bring back, actually, when you plant trees, it brings back, it regenerates the water cycle, so you can increase rainfall as well.
And I hope you, if you haven't had an opportunity, I hope you make that same presentation at the Newark Unified School District Board.
That's the next stop.
Good.
And thank you to Mayor Hannon for inviting Mila to come here and present. It was his inspiration that brought us here, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Since this is tonight, we're going to head out.
Great. Again, we're still on the public comment section. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on public comment, on items not on the agenda? All right, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Mr. Benun, you've made the request to remove item D5 to allow yourself and Councilmember Cantasio to recuse from the landscaping and lighting district. So, I'm going to go ahead and proceed, Mr. Benun and councilmember, with items 1 through 4. Mr. Benun, is there any item 1 through 4 that you'd like polled?
Not items 1 through 4, Your Honor.
Folks, is there anybody in the audience that would like to poll items 1 through 4, any of those items? Seeing none? Colleagues, any items on 1 through 4? Okay, the consent calendar consists of the following: the approval of audit demands, approval of the May 8, 2025 minutes, 3, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with what's happening Tri-City Voice for Legal Advertising Services in fiscal year 2526, and delegating authority to city staff to annually contract for the publication of legal notices, and 4, adopt a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Contractual Services Agreement with Coming Management, Inc., for Construction Management Services, and approving an amendment to the 2024-2026 Biannual Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. If I could get a motion and a second on the consent calendar, please? So moved. By the Councilmember Jorgens, second by Vice Mayor Little. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item which we pulled off consent is D5. Mr. Benoon?
Yes, good evening, council. My primary residence is located within District 11, landscaping and lighting district number 11. I own property in there. It's my primary residence, and as such, I took no part in the preparation of the staff report, so I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself. Assistant City Manager was the final reviewing administrator on this item.
And Councilmember Cantasio?
Yes. I'm also recusing myself because I have real property interest in the landscaping and lighting district number 11, which is my residence.
D5 is a...
You can do it.
Adopt resolutions for approval of the annual engineering report. Can we stop the cameras?
So moved.
Motion by them.
Adopt resolutions for approval of annual engineers report, intention to levy and collect assessments, and setting a public hearing for June 26, 2025, for landscaping and lighting districts number 1, 2, 4, 7, 11, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 for fiscal year 2526 in accordance with the provisions in the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. Assistant City Manager Avorka, comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the second of a three-step process to complete the annual collection of levies for the city's established landscape and lighting districts. Staff leads this process with the assistance of a consultant, Francisco and Associates. And should you have any questions, we have public work staff in the audience, and Anthony Hernandez and Ed Espinoza of Francisco and Associates participating virtually.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Colleagues, any comments, questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion in a second to approve this?
So moved.
Seconded by Councilmember Grindal, seconded by Councilmember Jorgens. And that passes four eyes with Councilmember Cantasio recusing herself.
Resolution of the City of Newark approving report for landscaping and lighting district numbers 1, 2, 4, 7, 11, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 for fiscal year 2526 in accordance with provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Newark declaring intention to levy and collect assessments for landscaping and lighting district numbers 1, 2, 4, 7, 11, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 for fiscal year 2526 and setting the annual public hearing date for June 26, 2025 in accordance with the provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Thank you, City Attorney. We have no public hearings tonight, but tonight we do have a special item on the agenda. Our Chief of Police, who we are extremely proud of for what he does for our community, is going to give a presentation on the 2024 Newark Police Department Annual Report. City Manager, did you want to make any opening comments?
No, Chief. Go ahead and join us.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor Hanon, Council, and community members. I'm Jonathan Argüello, our community's police chief. It's a pleasure for me to be here this evening representing the dedicated men and women of the Newark Police Department and to deliver the Newark Police Department's 2024 Annual Report. I'm also pleased to have with me this evening Captain Julie Macias, who will be presenting along with me, as well as key members of our leadership team, our lieutenants and captains, as well as our crime analyst, Victor Wong, and our record supervisor, see him somewhere back there, Jeremy Beck, in the audience, who all had a role in preparing the data in I'd like to preface the presentation with this. The police officers and support staff of the Newark Police Department are committed to employing innovative strategies to address crime trends and community safety concerns through genuine dialogue. Educational programs directed crime prevention and enforcement with an emphasis on leveraging technology to solve crimes and holding those who victimize our community members accountable. We look forward to continuing this trend in 2025 as we prioritize employee wellness and recruitment, enhance our community partnerships to achieve our shared goals, and improve the quality of life in our community for a safe and vibrant Newark. The mission of the Newark Police Department is to provide professional public safety services in partnership with our community. If you look back to intro here, it's the mission of the city. It's our mission to serve and partner with our community to continually enhance the quality of life for everyone in Newark. So if you look at ours, they align very nicely. We support our mission through our commitment to our community and our employees to improve the quality of life for all through proactive and innovative public safety services. And so I hope it's clear to each of you that as leaders of our city and to Mr. Benoon, that the mission and vision are supported by all the members of our department. Their commitment to it is reflected in the services we provide daily. Our organizational values. In order to support the mission and the vision, it's extremely important to have our organizational values identified. They provide the compass for everything we do. Our organization has identified honor, integrity, professionalism, commitment, and leadership as our shared values. These values have a special meaning to me as I had a stake in developing them along our leadership team during our leadership workshops. These values have guided us well and aligned seamlessly, again, with the City of New York's organizational pride values of personal service, resourcefulness, innovation, diversity, and Many studies have shown that shared values fostered heightened levels of motivation, pride, company loyalty, and teamwork. In order to support the mission and vision with the participation of all the members of our staff, we developed our strategic plan. The strategic plan was designed to connect the mission and the vision through organizational pillars into action items. The members of the department worked together to identify these six pillars, or what I'd like to call or refer to as our foundational expectations. First, communication, both internally and externally. Accountability and ownership to ourselves, each other, the organization, and then our community. Discipline, which essentially is a structured and professional approach to how we provide our services, which leads to professionalism. Ensuring we are always focused on ways to develop future leaders of the organization, leadership development, and that we work to maintain trust both within the department and our community. The action items were designed to move the police department forward while taking into consideration the needs of our community, all while connecting the pillars to the mission and the vision. Next, we'll transition to recap some of our notable accomplishments for 2024. Employee retention and recruitment is at the core of our ability to provide effective public safety services. City staff's continued commitment to our highly effective recruitment program supports this identified priority. The police department and HR departments celebrated bringing on 15 new employees to fill existing vacancies during 2024. Four of those hires were police officers, two were public safety dispatchers, a community engagement manager, a support services specialist, a special assistant to work on our newly-launched CCW program, a full-time and a part-time vehicle abatement officer, and four police service aides. We expanded and improved the capabilities of the field training program in preparation for the inflow of recruits. We prioritize new training for field training officers, emphasizing adult learning and specific ways to teach de-escalation, mental health response, case law, and then mentoring of trainees. And our team is currently implementing an FTO program management platform. We have continued to enhance our employee wellness program by adding a quiet room, up-down desks, cardiometabolic health screenings, and expanding our support services provided under our psychological services contract. Our organization remains committed to improving employee wellness through programs intended to improve physical and mental health and fitness. This commitment to recruitment and retention positioned us to relaunch our school resource officer program. And S.R. McEwen is doing a fabulous job at Newark Memorial this year. Nothing but great reviews we're getting, and we are happy to be presenting on that to the partnership meeting coming up in June on the program. This has also provided us the setting for us to develop new rest employees into specialty and collateral duty assignments such as acting sergeant, detectives, K-9, field training, defensive tactics, and crisis negotiations. The police department's newly-hired community engagement manager, Ms. Shabna Sharma, has begun working in concert with the department's many units, programs, and stakeholders in enhancing community partnerships. During her first few months, CEM Sharma has relaunched our neighborhood watch, our business watch programs, and has quarterbacked nearly 40 engagement events. Along those lines, CEM Sharma is currently looking for volunteers to join the city's graffiti abatement, vote volunteers, and an upcoming community police academy in Espanol. We also recommitted to our police explorer program, growing this important youth program from six in 2022 to 14 the next year, to over 20 police explorers over the last few months. And this is reflective of the passion that is from the team that leads it, Lieutenant Sandoval, Officers Pacheco, McEwen, and Soto, who lead this program. Most recently, this January, we relaunched our traffic safety unit to underscore the recently-acquired Office of Traffic Safety grant in the amount of $75,000, which focuses on a variety of traffic-related issues such as drunk driving, speeding, and other primary collision factors, with the goal of reducing our city's collision rate. I'd like to thank the Lieutenant, Simon, and the Sergeant in charge of this program, Sergeant Fredstrom, for their great work in managing the previous year's traffic grants. It's a big factor in securing future grants for the city is the ability to successfully carry out the grant activities and the goals and show improvement. So that's why we've received this grant many years running, while other cities do not receive it a second or third time based on their performance. If you haven't already seen our motor cops, Officers Frantesco and Capu, stand by. They're on their motorcycles. You will be seeing them. Their job is to be highly visible, to basically dissuade folks from violating traffic laws which cause our crashes. With an emphasis on transparency and accountability, we collaborated with our IT and public works partners to upgrade our body-worn cameras during 2024 and added integrated fleet in-car cameras. Consistent with the city's pride values, championing innovation has led to improved efficiency and community safety. For example, our recent addition of automated license plate reader cameras, ALPRs as we call them, at our city's ingress points, a program secured through state appropriations of $750,000 that were utilized for the 2023 project, continues to yield positive results. This technology has been instrumental in aiding officers in locating stolen vehicles, apprehending criminals, and locating missing people. To provide you a little context on how the teams are leveraging this recently-acquired technology, I'll throw out some really preliminary stats. During 2024, there were over 1,200 ALPR individual activations related to felony-wanted vehicles, stolen vehicles. The technology has been instrumental in over 70 cases that resulted in arrests related to such crimes as domestic violence, assaults, stolen vehicles, thefts, package thefts, and Some other notable accomplishments regarding grants. In 2023, we applied and were selected to receive grant funding in the amount of $986,000 through the California Board of State and Community Corrections for a multi-year vehicle and accessory theft prevention program to address an increase in catalytic converter and motor vehicle theft. I'd like to stop and thank Captain Macias and Crime Analyst Wong... For their thorough work in the application process to secure this grant for our city. It's a big chunk of money, and their thorough work was the backbone in getting that and securing that. So I want to take a moment to update you on the program that was launched last year. In 2024, as part of the initiative, staff partnered with the Mission Valley Regional Occupation Program to create a free catalytic converter label etching program for all our community members. The Newark Vehicle and Accessory Theft Prevention Program website has been launched with grant information and an online booking portal for catalytic converter etching. It's at NVATPP.com. Through the grant, we have been able to expand our ALPR program with six new fixed ALPR cameras added to cover city entrances and five mobile trailers with ALPR technology. Additionally, the grant funding secured... The grant funding secured three mobile camera trailers and a branded pickup truck to deploy the equipment. These trailers are rotated throughout the city according to crime trends that are identified by the police department's crime analyst. They serve both as an investigative tool and a crime deterrent. I'd also like to thank CEM Sharma, Acting Lieutenant Huma Yun, Sergeant Fredstrom, for their work on this part of the program, which continues to expand our capabilities. They manage how we deploy it, where we deploy it, and interact with the community on their wishes and where they're feeling unsafe, and we try to pair that up with the data. Shortly, you will hear from Captain Macias about some examples of how our teams have been championing our organizational priorities and leveraging this recently-acquired ALPR technology to reduce crime and provide excellence in service to our community. We transition to some of our strategic planning, our current priorities. When it comes to strategic planning, we will accomplish our mission through our vision founded upon the underpinnings of the following priorities and programs: retention and recruitment, employee wellness and engagement, championing of technology, staff and leadership development, crime reduction and traffic safety, and community service and engagement. This is an exciting and challenging time in law enforcement as we navigate this ever-changing legal landscape to harness technological advancements such as the newest ALPR cameras, unmanned aerial vehicles, and pursuit intervention technology to improve public and officer safety, and look at how emerging technologies such as... safety, and look at how emerging technologies such as EV fleets and AI are influencing policing. We're also facing unprecedented challenges in law enforcement with recruiting and hiring impacting many aspects of agencies' abilities to provide basic public safety services. Recruitment and hiring. We remain committed to our highly effective recruiting program. We have fostered innovation to address this national hiring climate by leading a recruitment team comprised of various police department, finance department, HR department, and city leadership stakeholders. To best accomplish the various program initiatives, we have envisioned and led a stakeholder engagement process for an organizational restructuring, creating a full-time recruiting sergeant position. And I'll be clear, it was not an addition of a new position, but it was so important that we planned a reallocation of an existing sergeant position to focus primarily on recruitment. Some additional components of our recruitment program include an increase in hourly pay for academy recruit officers, a lateral police officer hiring incentive program. We implemented an employee referral incentive program, which applies to all full-time City of Newark employees, step-for-step hiring for lateral officers, a lateral officer leave incentive program, and the ability to provide for a modest academy tuition cost reimbursement for those who will complete the academy prior to being hired. To take on this challenge, the Recruitment Sergeant Tony Heckman has enthusiastically represented our city at numerous events such as B testing, WSTB testing, Newark Days, Cargo Assault Safety Fair, Gavlin College's Requalification Academy, Emergency Vehicle Show, California Bay Job Fair, and the Alameda County Fair, which we will be having a booth throughout the entire fair coming up next month, starting next month. Our authorized personnel. The Newark Police Department has authorized 58 sworn staff members and 33 professional staff positions. As of the making of this slide, our vacancy was nine police officers. Because this is an ever-moving target and largely due to City Council's support of our recruitment efforts, we continue to see dividends. We have three officer trainees currently attending police academies. They're scheduled to graduate the academy this September and enter our field training program. We anticipate issuing conditional offers of employment to a dispatcher candidate and a police officer lateral candidate who wishes to return to Newark after a one-and-a-half-year hiatus. Both will be working through the medical components of the hiring process. And we also have four additional police officer candidates in the background process and another test of officer testing and dispatcher testing scheduled in the next couple of weeks. We do dispatcher or officer testing every two weeks. That's the commitment we've received from our HR department. Whether we have five candidates to interview or 20, we do them every two weeks. One of our niches is being faster than larger organizations. So I'm pleased to forecast that we will be down to eight police officer vacancies in the coming days. Recognizing our employees. Leadership development continues to be a focus for us in 2024, or continued to be a focus now in 2025. We promoted one sergeant, featured there in the center, one dispatch supervisor, and developed two acting sergeants. Another very important component is providing internal opportunities for professional growth through individual development plans to include leadership programs such as the Two Leadership Academies that are coordinated by Assistant City Manager Havorca, the Emerging Leaders and Mid-Managing Academies, Law Enforcement's Inner Perspectives, the Supervisory Leadership Institute, Command College, and the FBI National Academy. Last year, three police department employees benefited from such leadership development opportunities. And the police command staff has mentored two employees from other city departments through such programs. Just this Tuesday, our command team had the pleasure of attending Acting Sergeant Herbert's graduation from the Inner Perspectives program. And Lieutenant Grucey recently graduated from the California Peace Officer and Standards Command College program, a very prestigious police executive leadership program. So I'll be talking about that next year, and we'll have some photos. But last week, we also learned that Lieutenant Simon has been selected to attend the FBI's National Academy at Quantico, Virginia this fall. Our calls for service. Let's give you a little snapshot and perspective of what we have for the call volume for the year. Last year, our field personnel responded to 34,128 field incidents. Of those, 23,542 were community-initiated service calls. Officer-initiated activities, there was 10,586 officer-initiated calls. Officer-initiated activities are, for example, car stops for vehicle code violations, contact with community members, and business security checks. Our dispatchers handled 60,638 calls, including both incoming and outgoing phone calls. That's two dispatchers working every shift, 24/7. What's really impressive about that number is that our dispatchers answered over 13,000 emergency calls to 911, with almost 100% of them, if you look at the bottom right of the slide, answered within 15 seconds. The National Emergency Number Association, NINA, sets a standard for 911 calls to be answered within 15 seconds 90% of the time. When seconds matter, that number is exceptional. These next two slides represent the Uniform Crime Reports from 2020 through 2024. Additionally, a comparison between '23 and '24 is presented. You'll notice a notation next to '22. The Newark Police Department transitioned to the California Incident-Based Reporting System, or CYBERS, reporting at the end of 2021. Therefore, 2022 marks the first full year of CYBERS statistical information. As a refresher from our 2021 annual report, uniform crime reporting was a collective effort by cities, counties, and state law enforcement to present a nationwide view on crime. And it was also used generally by law enforcement agencies to indicate an increase or decrease in the crimes that are occurring in their community. In recent years, the FBI decided that each state would need to report crime statistics in a national incident-based reporting system referred to as NiBERS. And then, the California Department of Justice expanded NiBERS data elements to require the collection of more specific data, and then to eliminate what's called the hierarchy rule, which is a rule that allows the reporting of the single most serious offense regardless if there were other offenses occurring during the same incident. CYBERS collects up to 10 of the reportable offenses even when they occur at the same incident, which effectively is a more accurate way of reporting crime. So for example, if a victim murdered during the commission of a robbery, was murdered during the commission of a robbery, under the UCR system, only the murder would be recorded. Using CYBERS, both the murder and the robbery would be reported in their respective categories. In addition, under the UCR system, a single incident was recorded regardless of how many victims were involved. Under the CYBERS system, an incident is reported for each crime victim. For example, if a robbery occurs and there are two victims, UCR reporting reflects one robbery, CYBERS reporting would show two. The end result, there may be an appearance that crime has increased in certain categories in 2024 compared to previous years, 2022, and back, because we are now capturing crimes that were considered lesser using the hierarchy rule. This is something to keep in mind for the next couple of years. The four significant categories for person crimes are homicides, rape, robbery, and assault. The data reflects that we had decreases in two of the four categories, with 58 more assaults and batteries occurring in 2024, reflecting an increase of 15%. I'd like to add that although we're continuing with a downward trend this year, we take sexual assaults very seriously, and our detective unit tenaciously investigates them to a resolution. Our detective team provides the greatest investigative efforts towards solving these crimes. I don't want to minimize the seriousness of these crimes, but I do want to reassure the community when I say these are not random acts. Sadly, they were cases in which the victims and suspects were known to each other. I am pleased to report that our property and person crime rates to date are down 34% when compared to the same timeframe last year. When person crimes do occur, our department aggressively investigates them, and although time and locations of these crimes are difficult to predict, our officers work with our community members to prevent prevention strategies through Neighborhood Watch, Merchant Watch, meetings, social media campaigns, and crime prevention through environmental design efforts. Transitioning to property crimes. Although overall in 2024 we experienced a slight decrease in property crimes, we saw an increase in three property crime categories: theft, arson, and vehicle theft. Some of the factors we believe may have been contributed to the crime increases are the result of many offenders not incarcerated long enough to receive the help needed like substance abuse treatment, instead being immediately released to commit additional crimes to support their habits. In recent years, we have noted a system where officers arrest suspects for committing crimes such as theft, burglary, and motor vehicle theft, and these suspects are often quickly released back into the community, only to commit additional offenses soon after. Incarcerated suspects are prevented from committing additional crimes. When suspects are released back into the community with the notice to appear to court, there's often little incentive to appear in court. During interviews with some of the officers, suspects have actually stated that they knew that they would be released from jail with a citation and face no serious consequences, which is why they committed additional crimes. This is not unique to Newark. Our experiences are consistent with those of other cities in the region and state. In order to address these crime trends, we continue to examine our cases. We work with other agencies in the region to identify criminals who are committing crimes in multiple jurisdictions. We continue our participation with the Southern Alameda County Major Crimes Task Force. We provide training to our officers on how to identify and document gang-related activity, and we ensure our criminal evidence response team has the most current training on evidence identification and collection techniques to present the best case possible to the District Attorney's Office. Furthermore, our Crime Analyst and Strategic Policing Program has been launched. After receiving support from city leadership for Newark's first crime analyst, my team has recently launched an innovative, multi-pronged strategic policing program. This cross-functional approach involves our recently acquired technologies such as the community safety cameras, our new crime analysts immersed with internal stakeholders, our new community engagement manager, all of it where they're working with other external and regional law enforcement agencies, and then partnering with community stakeholders to address these developing crime trends such as the ones we've discussed in quality as well as quality of life issues. As part of our overall new strategic policing program, we have increased our community involvement through social media, community crime prevention meetings, and dedicating more time to our Merchant Watch program. Snapshot of cases presented to the District Attorney's Office. In 2024, we processed 5,244 cases. I recognize that number looks very large when comparing to the numbers on this slide. This is the number of all reported cases, the 5244. For example, if someone reports a package theft and there's no information that could lead to a suspect, that is part of this number. If we had a series of vehicle burglaries and unable to identify evidence that would lead to a suspect, that's also part of this number. Generally speaking, when a victim does not want prosecution or they're uncooperative, these are all represented in this number as well. It's the total number. The number of cases in which the officer had enough evidence to make an arrest or probable cause was 809. These were the cases sent to the District Attorney's Office. Of those cases, 53 were charged as felonies, 266 as misdemeanors, and another 36 cases the probation of the offender was revoked, and 406 cases prosecution was declined. Our communities do not go from being from safe to being unsafe overnight. Our communities become less safe incrementally, and it starts with those with intent on victimizing our communities, determining how much lawlessness is acceptable. And this incremental acceptance moves the bar just a little bit further as the new standard of lawlessness becomes acceptable. When crimes are committed and not prosecuted, it leaves a victim without justice and empowers criminals to continue their victimization. This slide is a chart representation of the breakdown by percentage of the 809 case dispositions by felony misdemeanor, probation revoked, and declined to prosecute. In 2023, the Department of Justice released a bulletin titled Arrest History of Persons Admitted to Stay Prison in 2009 and 2014. According to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, persons admitted to person had a median of nine prior arrests in their criminal histories prior to being admitted to stay prison. Although we are not ultimately responsible for prosecuting criminals, we are committed to putting forth our best investigative effort prior to sending the cases to the District Attorney's Office. With the help of our new crime analysts, we are now tracking our cases to look for patterns that may identify ways to improve our criminal investigations. I'd also like to provide a quick snapshot of where we're at today on public safety. Pleased to report that our crimes against persons and property crimes have decreased across most categories compared to January through April of 2024. For example, in an area of concern for our region of vehicle thefts, we have achieved a 53% reduction from 157 to 74 incidents compared to the first four months of 2024. Overall, property crimes and crimes against persons have been reduced by 34% when compared to the same period last year. We believe these positive results can be attributed to several key factors, including an emphasis on recruiting and hiring police officers, which is leading to an increased staffing levels and heightened officer presence in the community, an increase in community engagement and partnership initiatives such as Neighborhood Watch, Business Watch, Merchant Watch, and programs like the Newark Vehicle and Accessory Theft Prevention Program, an enhanced collaboration with the Alameda County District Attorney's Office to ensure offenders are charged and held accountable, and our use of advanced technology, particularly the ALPRs, has proven to be a game changer in identifying and apprehending offenders more efficiently. This reassures us that we are at the forefront of crime prevention, leveraging these best This graph compares the last five years of collision calls for service and investigations. The blue bar is calls for service, which could include multiple calls for the same crash. The green bar represents collisions investigated, and the red bar represents fatal collisions. Even one fatal crash is not acceptable. We will continue to work towards our goal of zero and encourage our community to not drink and drive, wear their seatbelts, and give themselves plenty of time to travel to their destination. We are excited to report with our staffing improvements, we have successfully relaunched our traffic unit in January with two dedicated motorcycle officers. Additionally, the recently acquired Office of Traffic Safety Grant focuses on various areas, including drunk driving, speeding, areas that focus on what we've identified as our primary collision factors in Newark, with the goal of reducing our collision rate in the city. We'd also like to report on our use of force to our community. This slide really provides context. Of the approximate 34,000 field incidents last year, only 30 resulted in an officer having to control a combative or physically resisting suspect. And all but two of the 30 cases, no civilians or officers were seriously injured. This slide reflects the percentage of the types of force used in comparison to the total number. Overall, there were 30 incidents where force was used in 2024, and there were 67 total uses of force during 2024. This includes every person who used force. For example, if two officers discharged their tasers during the same incident, that would be two uses of force. Although officers cannot be expected to successfully de-escalate every situation, we have highly-trained and skilled officers. We continue to provide essential training to our staff among many topics, which among many topics include scenario-based force options training, de-escalation, crisis intervention, tactical communications, and in all of our scenario-based training, we require using de-escalation skills. In addition, I'm proud to say when audited by the California Commission on Peace Officers' Standards and Training Post, we were 100% in compliance with the audit. Our officers use force less Our officers use force less than 1% of the time. In fact, that actual number is less than 1/10 of 1%, which is closer to zero. Our Crime Analyst. From day one, our Crime Analyst has been proactive and dedicated to enhancing our policing strategies. Over the past year, he has worked diligently with our patrol staff to create a proactive policing bulletin. This advanced tool is designed to address crime trends throughout the city effectively. These bulletins are invaluable in disseminating critical information to all of our teams, alerting them to emerging trends and issues within our community. This enables our officers to address potential problems or to be on the lookout for specific activities. The proactive policing bulletin is not a static document. It's continuously updated and refined to meet evolving needs of our patrol teams. The statistical analysis conducted by our Crime Analyst was instrumental in supporting our applications and our continuing reporting for the grants that we have required. I would like to highlight the invaluable contributions of our Crime Analyst to our detective unit as well. During recent staffing challenges, his expertise in computer forensics has been instrumental in several investigations. His skill has helped us identify potential suspects and solved multiple cases that might have otherwise remained unsolved. With the implementation of the Crime Analyst position, our department has gained the capability to participate in various regional data sharing groups. These groups provide valuable insights into regional crime trends that affect our city, enabling us to prepare for these trends before they even start coming to Newark. By sharing investigative and crime prevention insights with other cities, we can enhance our strategies and responses and link crimes that occur in Newark to other cities as well. This allows us to leverage the expertise of other investigative units to identify suspects and solve crimes more effectively. At this time, I will introduce you to Captain Julie Macias, who's going to cover our report on Community Safety Camera Program and discuss some case examples with you.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. I am Captain Julie Macias. For this year's Automated License Plate Reader Annual Report, I will provide a brief background overview of the program, statistics and audits for 2024, and significant cases that clearly highlight the ongoing value of the program. In 2024, our Flock Safety Automated License Plate Reader, or ALPR, camera program expanded thanks to our BSCC grant, from 20 cameras to 26 fixed cameras at city entrance and exits, and five mobile cameras that are deployed and rotated throughout the city on speed trailers, as you see on the bottom picture up on our screen. Additionally, there are nine cameras owned and operated by homeowners associations. Civic Terrace and Sanctuary Village both have cameras. One camera was just recently added this year in 2025 in the Lake neighborhood. Our ALPR policy adheres to the guidelines set forth in the California Values Act, which protects immigrant safety by prohibiting the sharing of license plate and personal information with U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency. Newark Police Department only shares camera data within our state to 285 California law enforcement agencies. We conducted internal audits of the system, which consisted of all investigative searches from outside agency as well as organization audits that include how staff enter search characteristics, such as vehicle and crime type, reason for search, and time of search. Multiple audits throughout the year reveal the need for continual training reminders to staff on the reason for search field. Our professional standards and training unit has followed up with training and provides periodic training refreshers. It's important to point out that the ALPR metrics that you see here are all associated with either camera activations or investigations, where the system was utilized to generate investigative leads. There was a total of 364 ALPR activations where a police call for service was generated, and the system was utilized 536 times for investigative follow-up. The total number of crime reports generated just by an ALPR activation was 37, but the total number of cases in which the system was used as an investigative resource was 117, which you don't see up on the board. The cumulative total of persons arrested, cited, or sent for complaint to the District Attorney's Office was 70, and 21 stolen vehicles were recovered with a direct correlation to our ALPR usage. I could go on all evening with a long list of all the cases where this technology played an important role, but I wanted to share just a few. Our officers have conducted outstanding police work through the use of this technology, solving homicides, robberies, but I wanted to share a few very relatable examples. A commercial property owner reported illegal dumping that had been going on for years. The property owner was able to provide a photo of a suspect and their vehicle using their dumpster. Without a license plate, the investigating officer with the assistance of our Crime Analyst conducted multiple searches in the Flock system based upon the unique descriptions of the vehicle's specialty aftermarket features. The officer was able to make contact with the suspect who admitted to the dumping, and a case was sent to the DA for charging. In January of 2024, a four-pound Maltipoo, you guys know that little cute little dog, was fatally struck by a vehicle while on a walk with its owner. The responsible vehicle unfortunately fled the scene. An immediate ALPR search of the nearby cameras led to officers locating the fleeing vehicle and contacting the responsible driver. An absolute tragedy but was quickly solved because of this technology. Throughout 2024, there was a surge in vehicle thefts, where a significant number of these vehicles fled from officers after they responded to the areas to investigate the stolen vehicle alerts. One prolific offender was involved in an estimated 40 documented cases of vehicle thefts within Newark, Fremont, and Alameda County Sheriff's Office jurisdiction. The Flock system was used as an investigative tool to assist officers to identify him as our fleeing suspect, confirm vehicle information, and reconnect victims with their vehicles, and in some cases, before they even realized they were stolen. Multi-agency investigative collaboration led to this particular offender's arrest just last November. He's still in custody and is facing upcoming six felony charges related to stolen vehicles and possession of stolen property. These are just a few examples to stress how this technology has been game-changing for our community and for staff to add to their overall effectiveness. At this time, I will pause for any questions before turning it back over to the Chief to wrap it up.
Let me ask the audience first if I may, Captain. Is there anybody in the audience that has questions regarding the ALPR program?
I have one.
Sure. Callings. Vice Mayor.
My question is with the license plate scanner, is it just when the entrance and they come in and it triggers it, and then they kind of like all the cameras turn on to keep an eye of where the car is going? Or how does it, like a car that's been called as stolen comes in, triggers it, then what's the steps?
So the next thing that occurs is an activation is alerted to our system. So all the officers in their vehicle will get an alert to know that maybe, for example, if a stolen vehicle entered on Thornton Avenue where we have a license plate camera as you come into our city. If one enters our city, that stolen camera goes off, but that alert goes to all officers on duty and to dispatch. And then after the alert occurs, they don't just go based upon the alert itself. Dispatch then does a verification check to confirm that it's still stolen in our SVS system, in our stolen vehicle system, because there's sometimes errors with the way that things are entered, or the plate read could be just off if there's a little dirt on the license plate. So it's the alert all the way around to everyone in the city who's on duty.
Can we just look for them, find them?
So there'll be a description of the vehicle, the make and model. They will respond into the area, and they happen to already be in the area, even better, but they, you know, often flood the area looking for that stolen vehicle.
Other questions? Captain Grindal.
Before I ask a question, I just want to say I'm very impressed and very happy to see the way you're utilizing this modern technology. It's just, it's very heartening to know that our police force is really up to speed. So just want to follow up on Councilmember Little's comment. You have 31 cameras, I understand, in the city, so that car might ping on numerous cameras, giving our officers a chance to sort of know even its direction. Is that correct?
That's correct. Currently, we have the fixed cameras just at the entrances and exits. So if we saw a vehicle, like the example I provided, came in the city, and then we saw it ping again as it exited that same exit, that we would know that it came in and out right there at Thornton Avenue. Or if it came in and we got an alert a little while later at another city exit, we would see that that's the way we can track the vehicle's path of travel. We do have a handful of the camera trailers that are deployed throughout the city, within the city, which could provide us a better accurate path of travel if the vehicle stays within the city.
I understand that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions?
I just have two questions. Congratulations on securing the grant.
Thank you, sir.
That was outstanding. The cost for the trailers and the continued maintenance of these facilities, is there going to be an ongoing annual cost to us for that?
There's a variety of different pieces that are involved here. The ALPR cameras, the six additional cameras that were added through the grant are paid for through the duration of the grant, which is a total of three years. The fleet cameras that were added to our in-car cameras, those were secured for a total of five years, and those are on a subscription service. So it's not an asset that, those aren't assets that we own. Those are all subscriptions. We do have the assets of the speed trailers. Those are ours. Those are ours to keep. And in addition, the pole cameras are our own fixed assets, same with the vehicle that was secured.
And the technology is going to continue to improve in this area, so that's good to know. To Councilmember Grindal's question regarding the path of a vehicle coming into Newark and then leaving Newark, are we alerting other police agencies that the vehicle we saw as stolen entering our city has left our city and now is heading your city, a Fremont or Union City, whatever the case may be? Are they then alerted that this is heading into their city?
Yes, sir. Our neighboring agencies are often, much like our officers are often, listening to their radio traffic, so that is communicated that way. But then additionally, many, many cities surrounding us all have the same system as us, so as it leaves our city, their cameras will be alerted.
Perfect. Thank you, Captain.
Yeah, thank you, sir. At this time, I'll pass it back to Chief Arguello to wrap it up.
So we're going to switch gears here a bit and close this out by providing information about our various community engagement efforts, the interactive partnerships that we have with the people. We serve keep our police department informed of community happenings, help build trust, and empower our stakeholders to have a part in solving quality of life issues and other public safety concerns. So as you know, we have a robust and engaged volunteer program. These are us special people who donate countless hours of their own time for the betterment of our city and the police department. As you saw earlier, there's robust civic engagement in Newark, and you had all the kids coming out here, and you read about, you read out loud about their civic engagement and their volunteerism. It starts there and it continues with folks such as yourselves. Our volunteers perform a variety of tasks inside the department and in our community. They are often the first friendly faces to greet you at our front counter. They help with numerous community events. They provide important services such as ADA parking compliance checks, continually cover and remove unsightly graffiti throughout our city. Not many cities can boast that they offer services such as vacation home checks. We have our volunteers to thank for that community service. In addition to helping with city events like Newark Days and our annual tree lighting, our police explorers meet weekly to learn from our dedicated explorer advisory team. They learn about the department, the city, law enforcement profession, and many of our explorers have successfully transitioned to various roles within the department and other city departments. The program is an ideal recruitment source for us. Our Neighborhood and Merchant Watch groups allowed consistent communication between our department, our neighborhoods, and the business community. The merchant relationships developed are continuing to help us and collaborate on new issues as they arise. It's real timely. With the noted 11% increase in year-over-year thefts, our emphasis has been on meeting with our Merchant Watch groups to provide investigative updates, education on emerging crime trends, and resources such as crime prevention through environmental design assessments. Since C.M. Charms started, she has quarterbacked nearly 40 community engagement events, including events such as the ever-popular Document Shredding Event, which I routinely get asked about. Currently, we have approximately 22 Neighborhood Watch groups, 34 total volunteers. That includes seven volts, 10 graffiti abatement volunteers, and 22 explorers and counting. They do go off to college, so we fluctuate, and then we get new, but that's a great reason why it fluctuates. Our teams have partnered with civic and faith-based organizations when it comes to some of our other community engagement events such as Newark Promotoras, Abanzando, local churches and temples, and the Newark Chamber of Commerce and Abode Housing. We had a great turnout for our Harmony in Community Forum event. During the event, connections were made with various faith-based organizations and community members. And everyone's favorite event because of the deliciousness that occurs that night is National Night Out. It brings out our Neighborhood Watch groups, our HOAs, our city staff, together to interact on a personal level while enjoying a little bit of Newark cuisine. So the mayor's come out to that on other occasions, and city staff and other city council members, so it's always nice. We have a dialogue on a one-on-one basis, real small groups. It's a very pleasant evening. We're looking forward to our next annual participations to kick off this year. It's going to be on Tuesday, August 5. This fall, we're looking to expand our Community Police Academy and introduce a Spanish-speaking session as well as part of some of our programming. And we'd also like the opportunity that was afforded to us by other various city events. So I'd give you a quick rundown on some of them. We have Newark in some of the photos here, guest readers at Newark schools for their Read Across America program. We've been guest bingo callers at the Senior Center and self-proclaimed food tasters at the Dia Littis Muertos event. And we've, let's see, what's some of the other ones? A chance to create, which one are you looking at?
Big Truck Day.
Oh, Big Truck Day, yeah. So we do a lot of the city events, like Family Day at the Park, Gas Street Summer Barbecue, the Big Truck Day. Here, let's see if we have those photos. What else? We had the Mariachi Festival, and our annual tree lighting continue to thrive as some of our more dynamic city events, and the city evolves. Our staff really takes pride in providing the public safety services at these events while also building the connections with both city staff that we work, because we partner up with a lot of the other departments and the residents. We're going to transition to some employee-led initiatives. As you know, and you've heard, Newark is a community based on volunteerism. Many of our service-based organizations, such as Newark Optimists, Newark Rotary, all represented very well in this room. Newark, Love Newark, Viola Blythe have been a piece of our community fabric for decades. So I'd like to take this last opportunity to highlight some of the incredible community initiatives spearheaded by individual police department employees. In one illustration of how our staff has further championed the example set by our city leadership, one of our supervisors, Sergeant Carl Fredstrom, has spearheaded a group effort to raise funds and donate turkeys to the tri-city residents who could otherwise not afford some and needed a helping hand. So last year... So last year, Sergeant Fredstrom coordinated the donation of 288 turkeys to the Viola Blythe Community Organization. That's his record he was, we were talking about the other day. Over the last 10 years, this heartwarming collaboration has resulted in the donation of over 1,900 turkeys to the tri-city residents. And Acting Lieutenant Hume Yun was responsible for the successful Special Olympics torch run through our city to help support and raise awareness for Special Olympics athletes. Detective Musantri and Officer Lozier again organized another successful holiday toy drive for victim advocacy organizations such as Safe Alternatives to Violent Environments, otherwise known as SAVE, and the Alameda County Child Abuse Listening Interview and Coordination Center, known as CALICO. So to wrap up the highlights of 2024, as an organization, we're proud of our team's accomplishments, our citywide partnerships, the service provided to the community. We're fortunate to work with an incredible city staff and all our partner departments, and just as grateful to work with such a supportive community. Thank you, Newark City Council, for your continued support. The Newark Police Department is the trusted professional organization it is because of our dedicated staff and all of you. We would like to take this opportunity to thank each of you as our city council for your leadership and your support. We can't overstate the degree to which this community recognizes the hard work and sacrifice of its public safety professionals. The vision rests with you, and your support is greatly appreciated. We are committed to continuing our cooperative relationships in order to further the goals and the objectives of the city council and the city manager. We look forward to the remainder of 2025 as we strive to improve quality of life for our entire Newark community. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anybody in the audience that has questions that they'd like to pose to our chief? I'll turn to my colleagues, see if there's questions. Councilmember Cantancio.
I have comments.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your exceptional job that you're doing, especially with growing the explorers program. And I do know of two of those individuals as well. One's going off to UCLA, and the other one's going to UC Santa Cruz. So it's my hope that they also return back and help Newark. So thank you so much also for providing the office on campus now this year, as well as doing the community outreach. And that's amazing how you're using the new technology to help protect the citizens of Newark. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Jorgens.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. There's a lot from the past year that our community should be proud of out of your department's work. Very good job over the past year. I do have a question. If you want to go back to Slide 18, that's the collision calls for service. Is that data that we analyze kind of more broadly and share with Public Works, you know, I'm wondering if, you know, we can discover trends about, you know, if there's a lot of, you know, collision calls for service at, you know, certain intersections, maybe a problem with the built environment that, you know, we can go and, you know, fix in other ways? So I'm just wondering if, you know, we collect that data and share it to be able to pick up on those trends.
We do. We share the information through Switters, a statewide integrated traffic reporting system, and they get the crash reports. They're looking at it from the engineering perspective, the traffic engineering. And our traffic lieutenant coordinates and collaborates, and so does the sergeant with traffic engineering from the city side of the traffic, looking at it from that side of it. You know, they have three Es they talk about in traffic, and one of them starts with engineering, then education and enforcement. And so they definitely look at that. And then the data is looked at very specifically, specifically because of that grant that we put in for. That even requires us to look at it more analytically and look at what those primary collision factors that are most likely to occur in Newark, based on the data trends, and then go out and enforce that and then the education piece. So when you see us posting stuff on social media, you know, we're actually trying to keep heightening the awareness, whether it's a checkpoint, or we're out doing safety belt enforcement. We also participate in a regional program that's called the High Intensity Traffic Team, where we go out to other cities and help them with their traffic issues, and we send our traffic officers. And then reciprocally, they come into Newark, and we might have a day that we're using, you know, 20-plus traffic officers throughout Newark focusing on those very things you're talking about.
Yeah, that's great to hear. I'm, you know, I was glad that we can, you know, increase some of the enforcement there on some of the rule-breaking going on. I'm glad that we're also collecting the information that we'll need to fix the engineering problems that exist. When we do look at the active transportation plan, that's information that I'm going to want to see, because, you know, obviously, car collision with someone not in a car is, you know, going to be especially dangerous. So when we do look at that plan, that will be something that I'll want to see.
And we're very acute to those. We do pedestrian decoy operations. You may have seen those on social media, where we send out folks that are basically using our crosswalks to make sure folks are adhering to the law, and then we have officers there to make the enforcement stops. And we make it very, very clear that they're trying to cross. They're wearing, like, bright yellow and, you know, pausing at the, it's like you have every opportunity to stop, and some folks unfortunately don't. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Jorgen, Grindal.
I have just one question and a number of comments. So you indicated that you at least implied that since, in recent times, with your coordination and communication with the DA has been better, just wanted to kind of tease that out a bit. Have you seen, since leadership's changed in the Alameda County DA's office, have you seen a better communication, better charging, and just in general, better service to your department from that agency?
Sure. I would say that although we don't have data enough of a timeframe to have some data to do, you know, a very analytical comparison, anecdotally, we've noticed, you know, very proactive, I guess, perspective in taking and in charging the cases. So we have, and we've noticed increased collaboration and dialogue. Yes, for sure.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. That's what I kind of picked up, and I just wanted to call that out. So when it comes to comments, I can't even, I can't even possibly go over all the things that I'm extremely happy about, what you're doing. But let me just highlight, I am very happy that you're investing in your officers, that you're investing in training, that you're clearly, you didn't, I don't think you used the word, but clearly, you're working hard on morale for our officers, and that's going to, that's got to help us retain people and attract people. So I'm just very happy with the amount of investment you're putting into our people. We have, in my opinion, a great, great police force, and they're going to stay great by continuing to invest in them. So I can't, that really is the highlight for me of what you're doing. But really, across the whole gamut, the use of technology, the community outreach, I'm just very, very pleased. I commonly say we have the best police department in California, but I'm going to have to up that to the country. So I really am very impressed with the work you're doing, and thank you for, thank you for this detailed report.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the kind words. We can't accomplish anything without our people, so that is our number-one emphasis, and it pays dividends towards the service. You know, sometimes people will say, well, the service is, but we can't accomplish any of it if we motivate and train and get folks, you know, in that right mindset, then you're going to, your results will happen, you know, more organically. So thank you.
Chief, Vice Mayor.
Yep. Just real quick. I always love crunchy numbers, and I got a chance to look at it. You do, I took the amount of dispatch calls you have a year, divided it, it's 166 a day. That is wild. And then also with your calls, that divides it to seven calls an hour, just on average. So that's pretty wild, the amount of work that you guys do. And then 93.5 field incidents each day. That's a crazy amount of work. One of my biggest concerns is you guys. Your wellness is a big, important thing to me, and I see that you guys have a program going on, but I think you guys are in a very difficult position. You guys don't, you know, don't know what's going to happen every day. And my main concern is just making sure all of our officers and the people that are in the department have what you guys need, and have not only the financial support, the physical support, but also the mental support that we can offer you. So if you can just continue growing the wellness program, just if you guys can tell us what we, as city council members, can do to help you guys and make sure that you guys feel safe and comfortable and feel mentally good, to be, that would be very important to me. Please.
I appreciate it. The city's been great, and so has the council. We have a wellness budget line item, and we are continually expanding with little items, like we actually added some more pieces of equipment into our gym just recently. We're coming up on the end of our fiscal year, and, you know, we work with our finance department to make sure we use those funds and as they were meant to be allocated for these reasons, so.
Chief, I just have a couple of questions, and I want to echo a couple of my colleagues' comments. Councilmember Grindal's comment about the new DA, I'd be interested to see how that transforms from this year to next year in terms of their willingness to prosecute some of these cases moving forward. So I'd like to see that trend next year, how that's working. And to Councilmember Jorgens' comment, as you indicated, one death, traffic death is too many. I agree with him as well. If we see an opportunity through engineering or traffic calming measures to reduce that number, because we can do something as simple as, I'd certainly be interested in seeing that work done as well. Let me ask a couple of questions first. I appreciate the fact that we have less than 1/10 of 1% use of force, but I worry, Chief, a little bit. It's maybe a different dynamic. I worry a little bit about our worrying so much about the use of force that we then put our officers themselves in a position of harm's way. And I know we have highly-trained officers out on the street that recognize those trigger mechanisms, where somebody can go from a calm individual to completely erratic. How do I reconcile that in my mind? How does our citizen reconcile that in their mind, that we want to make sure we de-escalate every opportunity we can, but we don't put our officers in a situation where they may be harmed themselves? Can you talk about that for a moment?
So we do a lot of training for pre-event, you know, putting certain places into play, or certain components into place before they even arrive. And that training starts with the radio communications, the locations, knowing which locations there might have individuals that have certain triggers. And we don't try to position the officers where they're at a disadvantage. You might not, you might see an officer holding off to arrive at that call till they have that second officer, or that third officer, or two officers and a supervisor. So they position themselves at an advantage, just from sheer numbers, and then having different layers, what we call layers, force options, to minimize the potential to, you know, go to deadly force. Also, we gain compliance by doing that, because if you show up with the right tools, with the right people, you know, your person that you're going to be working with, or the person that might have not cooperated or might have resisted, then really thinks about it. Whether that's even showing up with a K-9 to an incident where someone would have otherwise fought you, and someone would have got hurt, just the mere presence of a K-9 sometimes is like, okay, I'm going to go ahead and cooperate. Or they may see our 40-millimeter sponge round launcher as well as taser out, and okay, well, boy. But if it was a solo officer, they can't have all those things out. So that helps de-escalate before we even arrive on scene.
Excellent. I worry about that, Chief, because federal and state regulations have made it much more challenging today to be a police officer than it has been in the past, and for the right reasons. There have been some mistakes made in other forces, and, you know, we need to remember that all these are residents and citizens of our communities, and so I recognize that. But it sounds, as there's planning, pre-planning that goes on in the officer's mind, as you've articulated before I even get there, that I'm prepared for any and all circumstances. So I appreciate that. I love the fact that we hired a crime analyst. That came to the council a few years ago, and we supported it unanimously. And the benefits that has paid off in terms of isolating incidents in parts of our community just makes us much more efficient. As I heard a council member say, when I was in government, we're never going to have enough officers on the street to patrol everything.
Correct.
But the more we can be smart about how we deploy our officers in locations where these crimes are occurring, just makes us more efficient. So I appreciate the crime analyst, what he does, and certainly appreciate those efforts. We have a new chamber president, and as we work forward, look forward to continuing to work with our merchants, this would certainly be a good opportunity as we hopefully see the chamber grow, that we might be able to make that connection and get word out in terms of that opportunity for new businesses to participate. Document shredding, Mr. Benun, I heard that come up at the senior meeting today, and I know we have a couple of events, I think, every year. Have we ever explored the cost of renting? And we used to have these in San Jose, where you'd kind of rent a big garbage can, and people could just throw things into the garbage can, and they'd come and pick them up every now and then when they get full. Have we ever looked at the cost, and whether or not something like that at the senior center, because I heard that from the seniors, something like that would be of benefit to those folks or at the library? Have we looked at that cost?
I don't believe we have, but we would be happy to do so.
Okay, great. I think that would be helpful. Seniors are very much worried about security concerns and things of that nature. A lot of them shred, so if we can make it easier for seniors to shred into a document opportunity like that, that would be great. Last comment I want to make, Chief, is it starts with you, and it starts with the city manager. You talk about organizational values, and, Chief, it starts with you. You create the environment that says, this is what we stand for, this is who we are, this is what we believe in. And you create an environment where people look at you and the city manager and say, that's who I want to be also. And so you've created that environment that emphasizes those qualities in all of our police officers, and you demonstrate that in the actions that you exhibit daily. So people know that if I want to be a Newark police officer, this is the way I conduct myself, because that's the way the chief conducts himself. So it starts with you, it starts with your command staff. Your staff recognizes it, we recognize it. When you show that next film in terms of hiring opportunities and why people want to work in Newark, you just have to show them a council meeting like this, where you're not criticized for whatever the issue may be of the day, but you know you have a council that supports you, supports the organization, and values what you do day in and day out. If this isn't a marketing tool that you could certainly take out and show, I can't think of a better opportunity to do that. But, Chief, it starts with you. And so thank you for the good work you do for our community. It's greatly appreciated. Mr. Benun, thank you for your reference as well. I think that's it on the questions. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Your honor, members of the council, one announcement this evening, and that is tomorrow is the city's State of the City address. It is from 3:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. It will be on Thornton Avenue, immediately adjacent to City Hall. This year, we are celebrating community and culture, so the event will include performances from various cultural groups, including many students from our Newark Memorial High School. The mayor will take the stage at 4:00 p.m. and provide his address to our community. There'll be food trucks, we have about 30 tables set up, various government partners will be there staffing the tables, as well as various City of Newark staff members. I will be closing Thornton Avenue starting at 8:00 a.m. to set up for the event, and I'd just like to acknowledge and thank all the staff members who've been working tirelessly behind the scenes. We have 20 staff members working on a committee led by the Assistant to the City Manager, Ms. Lori Getbard, and we are all very much excited and looking forward to tomorrow's festivities. Again, it starts at 3:00, with the address commencing at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, City Manager. I'll look for council comments. I'll start with Councilmember Cantancio.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to start by saying that as the Chair of the Southern Alameda County Geographic Information Systems Authority, we did have our meeting this week, and we did pass the budget for the next fiscal year. Also, our own Ed Miranda was able to present an outstanding presentation, so thank you so much. Over the weekend, I also judged the annual Classic Car Show, which was in front of O'Reilly's at Jarvis, and Dino's did supply free breakfast for the event. May 30th at 5:00 p.m. is Newark's Memorial's graduation, so congratulations again to all the seniors in the class of 2025. This month, I also celebrated AANHPI Month. I know there's a lot of letters there, so that does stand for Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month. And I was able to go with Alex Lee, as well as Councilmember Jorgens was there as well, to honor different individuals who have contributed immensely to the community. And I would like to propose that in the future, for Newark to also acknowledge and proclaim AANHPI Month. AANHPI Month for Newark as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Jorgens.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the work that city staff's been doing to get ready for the State of the City. I know it's going to be great, and I know there's a lot of work that goes into making it great. So I just do want to thank staff for, you know, putting that, you know, effort in to make it as great as it's going to be tomorrow. I'd like to congratulate all the students graduated, graduating from schools in the coming weeks, whether that's from elementary school, or middle school, or high school. It's, you know, a big deal and should be celebrated. And we had several impressive students here today, and I'd like to encourage all the impressive students at Newark, you know, go learn what you need to learn and then come back, you know, and give back to Newark. It's something that I would recommend.
Councilmember Grindal.
So first of all, I attended the Alameda County, thank you, I attended the Alameda County Housing Authority meeting, and also the Community Development Advisory Committee meeting. And also, I was able to join staff at the largest real estate conference in the, in the world. It was highly productive. We met with more than 50 retailers. I walked 60,000 steps in the, in the two and a half days that we were there. We met with numerous brokers and owners. I won't give, I won't give any names, because we don't want to give our, our competitors a, a, a chance to swoop in. But we had a very positive response. I want to thank our staffs, Stephen Turner and Angelo Tsui, who did a fantastic job working very hard to, to really help market our community. Economic development is critical to our community. It not only provides people places to, things to do, places to, places to get things they want, and places to eat, but it, it also enhances our revenue, and it's, and that's really critical. We've received a lot of positive feedback from the folks we were meeting with, that, that the city was actually out, going to them, trying to get them, trying to, to sell our community. So I, I think it was, I think it was a very good experience, and again, I want to thank staff for doing that. And one of the ways we can, one of the ways we can attract new retailers is for our existing retailers to do well. So everybody shop Newark, it's very important. And lastly, well, next, I'd like to, to indicate that I'm, I'm going to have a, hold a town hall meeting on Sunday at the library Newark Room at 3:30 PM. I'll have tacos, samosas, pizza, and snacks. So stop by, get something to eat, even if you don't want to talk. So, but, but if you'd like to talk and, and have a conversation about how we can improve Newark, I would, I would love that. And lastly, I wanted to echo Councilmember Jorgens in congratulating all the graduates for, for, of Newark Memorial and our middle school. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Little.
Always worked for me. All right. I will go a little bit quicker. Speaking about real estate, this upcoming Tuesday, we're going to, I put together the City of Newark Real Estate Discussion, where I'm inviting a bunch of real estate agents to come out. We're going to talk about them, and we want to let you know what's the good, what's the bad, what's the ugly, what can we do better for the city of Newark and continue to build our city. So it will be coming up on Tuesday at 2:00 to 3:30 for real estate agents, but anyone is more than welcome to come out if they want to come and add to it and discuss. On June 2nd, it is my final Pokemon meet and greet. It's going to be Kennedy Elementary School, and I had a little kid come up to me two means ago and say, this is ridiculous, you do all these meets and greets and no tournaments. I'm angry. So I'm putting together the First Annual Pokemon Tournament. It's going to be called, it's going to be called FUN Fremont, Union City, and Newark. You taught me that. So we're going to be putting it together, we're organizing it right now, we're hoping for it to be fundraisers for the PTAs, for the schools. So we're working on putting it together. It's going to be a lot of fun. Of course, June 7th is Fishing in the City. It's going to be at the lakes, it's going to be from 8:30 to 10:30. It's another great thing that Recreation and Community Services is putting together. On June 24th is the Big Truck Day, and you guys didn't talk enough about it. The Big Truck Day is coming up. It's going to be at the Silman Center from 10:00 to 11:30. July 27th, we have the Mariachi Festival at the Grove. It's going to be from 1:00 to 5:00 this middle of the summer. But most importantly, we're posting the, at the end of August, probably the second to last Sunday of August, is going to be ACES for Athletes. It's going to be that fundraiser we're putting together. It's a poker tournament. Play, gamble for the kids. It's for the kids, for the kids. So we're going to have it coming up, poker tournament. It's going to be at Swiss Park, and it's going to be on a Sunday afternoon, and the money goes towards Tri-City Athletes Center to help raise money for a lot of the underrepresented, underprivileged athletes in Newark, so we can help get them scholarships and get them up and running. So at ACES for Athletes. The speaker today, Ms. Tiffany, that got acknowledged, her and I are working on that together.
Excellent. The Tuesday event is going to be held where?
It's going to be at O'Sullivan's.
That's what I thought, just wanted to double check. Couple of comments. Looking forward to the State of the City address. We have a lot of positive things we've done in our community, and I don't want to just simply introduce my colleagues by name. If there's two or three bullet points that you want to summarize kind of your participation or activity within the community, i.e. future Optimus President, or whatever the case may be, please send those to me so I can introduce some of the notable things that you have done in our city or continue to do in our city. That would be greatly appreciated. We are going to be, Mr. Benoon, I would imagine, and by the way, Mayor Smith will be at the State of the City address tomorrow, as will Mayor Nagy. We're going to be recognizing former Mayor Jim Ballantyne, who unfortunately passed away a number of years ago, but my perspective is, I'm trying to resurrect some of the historical, historical perspective of our community moving forward. So I'm going to recognize Mr. Ballantyne's service, and his son will be there to be acknowledged. So I look forward to that. Council members, Mr. Benoon, I would imagine, are there, will there be spaces in the Civic Center reserved for them to get here and park? And thoughts?
Yes.
I'm going to be here at 3:00, so I think I'm going to be okay. So I want to thank the chief and all the officers for being here. Congratulations on your acceptance to, back, back east. We expect and hope you'll return, once you realize how bad the weather is back there. So congratulations on that, well-deserved. We will be adjourning to closed session for conference with Labor Negotiator pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representative will be myself. Unrepresented employee will be City Manager David Benoon. So we will be adjourning to closed session. Thank you for your participation tonight. I don't know, who turned on the air conditioning?
It's because so many people came in.